We are studying the end times, we're calling this the end, we are on part 3. The first week, we took a look at just kind of some basics of prophecy, looked at end times terminology, looked at why is prophecy so difficult to understand? Last week, we started looking at the feast of Israel, and we saw how the spring feasts, there's spring feast and fall feast, and let me just go ahead and move ahead to our next graphic here. We talked about how there's the spring feast, they're in green for spring, our fall feast would be in the orange, and the first four are the spring feasts, and they symbolize the first coming of Jesus, whereas the last three fall feasts symbolize the second coming of Jesus. And we'll just give a quick overview for those who aren't here. Passover takes place in the first month of the 14th day, and the immediate meaning to the Israelites, when they celebrated, it meant freedom from Egyptian slavery. But there was a prophetic understanding, there was a prophetic picture of Jesus died, he's the Lamb of God, and the application for the church and also for Israel, both of us, is that there's forgiveness of sin and death passes over us, just as death passed over the Israelites, as they were in Egypt. The second feast is unleavened bread, and that started on the very next day, on the 15th, and the immediate meaning was, the Israelites came out quickly and they ate unleavened bread, they didn't have time for the bread to rise. It symbolized Christ's death and his sinless life, and the application is, we have a new life, an abundant life, we're free from sin. We may remember that we looked at how Israel, the first day they entered the promised land was the day of the feast of unleavened bread, and they ate the fruit of the land, they ate unleavened bread, so it symbolizes for us, we are to be warriors for Christ, living in the promised land, a land that's full of milk and honey, a land of abundance, and it's a new life. And that was the second feast. The third one was the feast of first fruits, and that takes place on the 16th day. And so what you have is that Jesus has died, he's buried, he's in the grave three days, and then he raises on the day of first fruits. That was the prophetic event. The immediate meeting was it celebrated the start of the spring harvest in the promised land. And the application for the church is, we will be raised from the dead, and that Jesus is the first fruits, Paul talks about that. Then, a couple months later, in the third month, on the 6th day, is the feast of Pentecost, or feast of weeks, or feast of harvest, and that celebrated the end of the spring harvest. Jesus raising from the dead symbolized that the harvest is going to start, and when they finished the harvest, that symbolized the outpouring of the Holy Spirit. Now, it's the spring harvest. In Israel, there was a spring harvest and a fall harvest, and they had three harvest festivals. And we talked about how that represents the birth of the church, and we will review that a little bit more, because that feast directly ties into our first fall feast, the feast of trumpets. So we're going to get into the feast of trumpets tonight. And what is going to take place is, just as the spring feast was the first advent of Christ, the fall feasts are going to be the second coming of Jesus. And God is going to perform an act in the fall feast that will open the eyes of the Jews. They rejected Jesus the first time, but he's going to do something in the beginning of the fall feast, it's going to open their eyes. We talked a little bit how about this is like summer, between the spring feast and fall feast, it's summer, this is the time of the Gentiles. Fall will be Israel's season for salvation. Now, that doesn't mean a Jew can't be saved. Jews can't be saved during this time, it's just that there'll be a greater amount saved during the fall season, when the fall feasts take place, when they're prophetic events. And so God used the Gentile harvest, he's using his Gentile harvest to provoke Israel for salvation. He is not finished with Israel, there are some that teach he's finished with Israel, he's not. We see Paul said in Romans chapter 11, starting in verse 1, "I asked him, 'Did God reject his people?'" referring to the Jews. "By no means. I am an Israelite myself, an descendant of Abraham from the tribe of Benjamin. God did not reject his people whom he foreknew." Verse 11. "Again I asked, 'Did they stumble,' the Jews stumbled, 'so as to fall beyond recovery?' 'Not at all. Rather, because of their transgression, salvation has come to the Gentiles to make Israel envious.'" Did you know you're making Israel envious? That's why God has allowed this season. So, we have looked at how the feasts are shadows, shadow pictures of things to come. Paul said in Quodens, chapter 2, verse 16 to 17, "Let no one judge you in food or drink, or regarding a festival, or new moon, or Sabbath," which are shadows of things to come, but the substances are Christ. So, the Israelites, they thought these feasts really stood for something? Well, they stood for something for them, but they were just shadows of the greater reality that was pointing to the first and second comings of Christ. So, let's dive into the first of the fall feast, which is the feast of trumpets. It's also called Rosh Hashanah in the Hebrew, and so if you hear that, that's what it means, but you don't see Rosh Hashanah anywhere in the Bible, you see feast of trumpets. But the reason for that is because it's in English, Rosh Hashanah is a Hebrew word. It began on the seventh month, the first day. Now, let me just say, the seventh month of Israel is considered to be the most religious, the most zealous spiritually month of them all. And in preparation for that, they encourage people during the sixth month to begin to repent and examine their lives, and to get ready for what's coming in the seventh month. And I just think of that as sixth month is the summertime, the season of us Gentiles, and so it's a time when we're calling people to repent. So, I see a similarity there. But we read about the feast of trumpets in Leviticus, chapter 23, verses 23 to 25. It says, "Then the Lord spoke to Moses, saying, 'Speak to the children of Israel, saying, in the seventh month, on the first day of the month, you shall have a Sabbath rest, a memorial of blowing trumpets, a holy convocation.'" I want to stop right there, and we will look at just a few phrases found in verse 24. The first, it says, "It's a memorial day." The interesting thing is, you serve Scripture. There is no place in Scripture of what it tells you to remember. It doesn't tell you, in fact, as you look at all the feasts, this is probably one of the feasts, it kind of has the least meaning of it, and it's like God kind of shrouded this feast in secrecy. Now, I believe that this feast refers to the rapture, but God did dispel a lot of, and you know, Israel never thought of the rapture. Let me take a look at Matthew 24 and its parallel passages, when Jesus teaches on the end times, we're going to take one session and teach on that. We're going to see how that is really just dealing with Israel in the end times. Jesus doesn't touch the church, and that's why it seems like the rapture in that place might be kind of post-trivia, or it doesn't really line up, but that's because he's not teaching about the church, he's teaching about Israel in Matthew 24. But we're not told anything really about what you're to remember. The next phrase we talked about is the blowing of trumpets, and that phrase, blowing of trumpets, is really one Hebrew word, terua, and that word means clamor. It's an acclamation of joy, woo! Or it's a battle cry, da-da-da-da, charge, you know? And so it can be over this use for alarm, or for rejoicing, or for shouting, it's very loud. The next phrase that was found in verse 24 was a holy convocation, and a holy convocation was basically calling people out, calling God's people out, to gather together, to come and pray and to see God. Now, when you look at those three things, we are, you think of the rapture, the rapture is a calling out of God's people, it's a gathering together. It's going to be a time of joy for the saints, hey, we're in heaven! But it's going to be a time of alarm for those who are left behind, including the Jewish nation. And so, all of these things in here are very fitting for the description of the rapture. So, let's take a look now in Leviticus, go back to Leviticus 23, and I highlighted this portion right here, it's underlined, verse 25. It says, "You shall do no customary work on it, and you shall offer an offering made by fire to the Lord." So this feast day was a day of rest for God's people, they weren't supposed to do any work. When you think of the rapture, that's a time when we rest from our works. We're not going to be working here, our summer is done, we're going to be taken to heaven with Christ. All right, when Israel celebrates the feast of trumpets, they use a shofar, a shofar is a ram's horn, a big long ram's horn, or it can be sure, but a shofar, and they blow the trumpets, and it's a wake-up call to repent. That's what the day of atonement, or excuse me, the feast of trumpets is seen, and actually, it's the gateway, it's the entrance to something the Jews call the days of awe, or the 10 days of repentance. And it starts on the seventh month, the first day, and then it goes to the 10th day. The 10th day is the day of atonement, the next feast that we're going to look at, and it includes the eight days in between, but it's a time when the Jews are told to meditate on the subject of the holidays, the subject is repentance, it's coming clean before God. Ask forgiveness of anyone that you have wronged and repented your sins. So that's the immediate meaning of what it means to Jews today when they celebrate the feast of trumpets. What's interesting is that in most communities, the shofar is blown 100 times on the feast of trumpets, on the seventh day of the first month. That's a lot of trumpet blasts, okay? So it's been sounding, it's just kind of like, it's sounding an alarm, get ready, prepare yourself. And the final horn blast goes much longer than the first 99 blasts. And so the final blast pictures the trumpet sound, which will announce the rapture of the church, which Paul mentions in 1 Corinthians, chapter 15. We see, starting in verse 51, Paul says, "Behold, I tell you a mystery." How many know the rapture's a mystery? We're trying to figure it out. When we talk just about the rapture, I'm going to show you Scriptures that point to pre, to mid, to post, and we're really going to confuse you, we're really going to mix stuff. You like being mixed up? That's good. Anyway, it says, "I tell you a mystery, we shall not all sleep." But it's interesting, many times in the New Testament, when the apostle Paul is describing the death of Christians, he calls it sleep, because it's not a permanent state. When we look at 1 Thessalonians, chapter 4, Paul says, "I am lying to you as to those, I want you to have hope. I don't want you to be like those who are not Christians, and their loved ones have died, and they have no hope of seeing them again. I don't want you to have that." Death is not a permanent state for the believer, he says you're asleep. So that's referring to, "We shall not all sleep, not all of us Christians will die, but we shall all be changed in a moment, in the twinkling of an eye." Remember that phrase, twinkling of an eye, because we're going to talk about that later tonight, okay? "At the last trumpet." Again, on the feast of trumpets, the very last trumpet is the long blast, "For the trumpet will sound, the dead will be raised, incorruptible, and we shall be changed." So this trumpet blast that's associated with the rapture is not to be confused with the trumpet judgments of tribulation. You've got the seven trumpets of tribulation, and a lot of people have said, "See, that's proof that the rapture takes place in the tribulation, because it talks about the seventh trumpet, that's the last trumpet." Well, no, there's 100 blowing trumpets on the day of feast of trumpets. And so, this trumpet, the last trumpet, Paul talks about in 1 Corinthians, is associated with the final horn blast of the feast of trumpets. All right, by the way, if you have any questions, just raise your hand, we have a microphone, we'll bring it to you. And for those of you watching online on Facebook Live, hey, welcome, it's good to have you. If you have any questions, just go ahead and type them in the comment line, we'll read them over the mics, so everyone can hear, and we'll do your best to answer the questions. If you have a question that we're going to cover somewhere else, we will write that down, and we will get to it. I know there were three questions from week one that we did not cover, and that's because we're going to cover them for the weeks ahead. So, don't fret if I haven't answered your question yet. So, yes, Debbie?
What is the seventh month?
The seventh month, ah, what's that called? I forget. And like, their first month starts around March, April. The seventh month is around September-ish. And it kind of changes every year, and it doesn't really start according to our Gregorian calendar. And I forget the name of the seventh month right now. Okay. By the way, I do not proclaim to be a prophetic expert, an end times expert. I am learning this, just as you guys are learning this, so. All right, let's move on on the feast of trumpets. The feast of trumpets is also the start of the Jewish New Year. Last week, we talked about there's kind of two different calendars the Jews run on. You've got the religious calendar, which starts with the first month of the year, where you've got Passover, unleavened bread, first fruits. But then, the seventh month, which is this month that we're talking about, is the Jewish New Year. Now realize, nowhere in Scripture did God ever set that up. But that's just something the Jews did, and I find it interesting, because the summer is the time of the Gentiles, the fall is the time of the Jews, like we said at the beginning of the evening tonight. And it's interesting that the feast of trumpets starts in the fall, the seventh month, the very first day, then the church is raptured, and Israel's time for salvation starts, and it's like the start of the Jewish New Year. Remember, these fall feasts really deal a lot with Israel, because Israel's been placed on the shelf during this summer season since Jesus died. But when you start the fall feast in the end times, God is going to ramp up his plan for Israel. And so, again, this is not to say that Jews cannot receive Christ now. Now, last week, as we looked at the feast of Pentecost, I just want to review that, because I think it's going to give us a good understanding for the feast of trumpets. We talked about the similarities between God giving Israel the law on Mount Sinai, and that took place in the third month, when you read about it in Exodus, chapter 19. And the Jews say that the law actually came down on Pentecost. When God appeared on Mount Sinai, or Mount Horeb, and he spoke, and there was thunder-bottling fire on that stuff, that was the day of Pentecost. And so as you look at that day, along with the New Testament day of Pentecost, we see many similarities. We see that fire fell from heaven on Sinai, Exodus 19:18. Fire fell from heaven on Pentecost, Acts chapter 2, verse 3. God gives the law in Exodus 20, God gives the Spirit in Acts 2:4. And in Exodus, tradition says God spoke in different languages. That's what the Jews teach, because there was a mixed multitude. A mixed multitude came out of Egypt, and we read that in Exodus 12:38. And on the day of Pentecost, God gave different languages. Acts chapter 2, verse 4, and then 8 through 11. Verse 8 through 11, there's 16 different locations that people came from. We've heard our specific dialect, our specific language, so God gave actual languages. When you and I speak in tongues, as Spirit-baptized believers, we are speaking in a language. It's not something we make up, it's not a bunch of gobbledygook, it's not just, you know? It's an actual language. In fact, there was a college that did a study about speaking in tongues, and they had Christians come in, spiritual Christians, and they attached electrodes to their brain that would monitor the area of the brain that deals with speech. And so when you would talk, this area of the brain would light up, because the mind is thinking and it's engaging in speech. So they had the people speak in their original language, and then they had them pray in the Spirit, pray in tongues. When they prayed in their original language, the area of the brain lit up. When they spoke in tongues, the area of the brain that regulates speech, it was dormant. It's like the brain wasn't thinking and it wasn't speaking. It's like scientific proof that when you and I speak in tongues, it's what Paul says, that the Holy Spirit is speaking through us. He uses our tongue when he prays to us, and so it's just very, very interesting. But when you speak in tongues, it's an actual language, either of prayer, of praise, of intercession, of spiritual warfare, where the Spirit is praying through you and praying to God. Okay, moving on, number 4 at the bottom here. Israel rebelled in Exodus, after they heard the law. Most went up on the mountain, and they rebelled, and 3,000 people were slammed from the Bolin-Cafan incident. You read about that in Exodus 31:28. And for Israel, we have 3,000 were saved, Israel repented, Acts chapter 2, verse 41. So those were some similarities between the giving of the law on Sinai and the day of Pentecost. We also talked about the giving of the law, or the Torah, at Sinai, symbolized a betrothal covenant. We'll talk about betrothal in just a little bit. Betrothal refers to marriage in the Jewish custom. But in Exodus 24:7 to 8, it says, "Moses took the book of the covenant." God gave the law, he was making a covenant, in the hearing of the people, and it says, "This is the blood of the covenant." You read in Jeremiah, chapter 2, verse 2, "Thus says the Lord, 'I remember you, the kindness of your youth, the love of your betrothal, when you went after me in the wilderness.'" Well, after the wilderness, it symbolizes the wilderness there in Sinai. And so, when God gave the law, that covenant, we talked about how marriage is a covenant to the Bible, and Malachi, it talks about you betrayed, you dealt treacherously with the wife of your covenant. You made a covenant with her, you've broken that covenant. God was making a covenant, betrothing himself to Israel. And what took place on the day of Pentecost is that God made a betrothal covenant with us, he gave us the Spirit. And before Jesus died, the night of the Last Supper, he sent to his disciples in John 14, verses 2 to 3, "In my father's house are many mansions; if it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you, and if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you to myself, that where I am, there you may be also." So, I wanted to review that a little bit, because I wanted to set up the betrothal idea that God betrothed himself to Israel in Exodus, with the giving of the law. He's betrothed himself to us at Pentecost, the day that church was birthed. Now, for us to really catch the meaning of the feast of trumpets, we have to understand the customs of Jewish weddings. And so, in a Jewish wedding, the bridegroom, and I want you, as we read through this, see if you can pick out any similarities between what happens to us as Christians when we become saved, okay? This is so interesting. The bridegroom, or an agent to the bridegroom, went in search of a bride. And an example of an agent going in search was when Abraham is looking for a bride for Isaac. And instead of him going or sending Isaac, he sends his servants. And, you know, the servant goes, and he finds Rebecca, and, you know, one of my favorite stories in the Bible is, she came and she watered all of his camels. And the thing is, camels could drink, like, I can't remember, it was like a ridiculous amount of water, like 20 gallons apiece, and she carried a pot that was two gallons, and she gave all of the camels, and she was working for probably two, three hours carrying water. She was a hard-working industrious lady. So all of our single guys out there, you're looking for a marriage partner, look for our industrious lady, it worked pretty well for Isaac, so. All right, so that's an example of an agent being sent. Next, a price would be established for the bride, they would negotiate a price. Then, the bride and the groom, and by the way, the Bible talks about a bridegroom. We'll refer to it as a groom, just for the shortness of it, the brevity of it, but bridegroom and groom are the same thing. The bridegroom were then betrothed and legally bound together, even though they didn't live together, they were legally married, okay? And so, if, while, you'll see how the groom would go away and prepare a place. That's why when Joseph was betrothed to Mary, he found out Mary was pregnant. It's just not like, well, the engagement is over. No, he had to get a certificate of divorce, proving, saying, hey, she's been unfaithful, so he would divorce her and break the betrothal. So even though they weren't living together, they were considered married. They had that relationship, they were bound together legally. Next, a scribe would draw up the marriage covenant, that would state the bride price, the promises of the groom to honor, support, and live with the bride, and then the other rights that the bride had. Finally, the groom presented the bride with gifts. If the bride accepted her groom's gifts, they would share a cup of wine, and it was called the cup of the covenant, and the betrothal was complete. Now, before the groom would leave his bride's home, he would tell her, "I go to prepare a place for you, and if I go, I will return again to you, I'll come and get you." The groom then went to his father's house to prepare a place. And during the following year or so of betrothal, there was no set time of when the groom was coming back. The bride was consecrated and set apart while she waited for her groom. Part of that preparation was she enjoyed a mikvah, or a cleansing bath, to purify herself for her coming wedding. And she had to make herself ready, and she had to stay ready, because she had no idea when her groom would return. Now, back in Bible times, no invitations were sent out. Can you imagine how much money they saved on an invitation? Stationery shops, they went out of business, you know? There were no wedding invitations back then. And the reason for that is because nobody knew the date of the wedding, not even the groom. The groom's father determined the date. When he looked at the preparation of the son, as he was preparing this place for him and his new bride to live in, once the father approved and says, "It's good to go," then the groom could return to go get his bride. The groom would arrive, yes, Don?
So would this usually be like an addition to someone's house? Like, is that, that's what I've heard at least?
And a lot of times it was, because when you look at the Old Testament, you know, the families lived together. The question was, for those listening online, this preparing a place, would that be like an addition to someone's house, an addition to the father's house? And yes, many times it was, though sometimes it might be just a place of his own, but the father would give his thumbs up, his approval on that, so. Okay. So when the groom arrived at his bride's place, he would arrive with a shout and the blowing of the shofar, the blowing of a trumpet. The groom then presented the covenant to the bride's father, and claimed the bride as his own, and took her to his father's house. His father would be waiting to receive the couple. The father would take the hand of the bride, and he would put it in the groom's hand, and that moment was called the presentation, and that was the moment when she became his wife. Before she was his betrothed, but when her hand was put into his hand, that's when she became his wife. And then after this presentation, the groom brought his bride to the bridal chamber he had gone to prepare, and really, it would be like an addition, because it's not just a bedroom, but there would be a lot of friends and family, the whole society of his friends, who came to celebrate his marriage. He would introduce her to them. So that is the custom of Jewish weddings. Now, when we look at the symbolism of the Jewish wedding, and how it applies to us and our Christianity, you and I, all believers, are the betrothed of Christ. The Holy Spirit was the agent who sought after us. He is convicting us of sin, John says, he's convicting us of righteousness, he's convicting us of the judgment to come, he's trying to draw us to Christ. And then we were purchased at Calvary with the blood of Jesus, that was the purchase price. We're told that without the shedding of blood in Hebrews, there is no forgiveness of sin. You see in the Old Testament, all things are cleansed from sin by the shedding of blood. And so that was the purchase price that was established. Jesus paid that price, he died, he gave his life. The father, who is also not just the father of the groom, but the father is the father of the bride, right? He's the father of the bride, the father accepted- The father accepted that price. And we, the bride, when we become Christians, when we repent of our sin and put our faith in Christ to cleanse us of our sin, not our works, that's when we accept the groom. And our betrothal covenant is the word of God because it contains every promise of our loving groom that he has made on our behalf. We exchange gifts at betrothal. Jesus gave us love. He gave us commitment. He gave us loyalty. He gave us a new identity. He adopted us into the family. He gave us the Holy Spirit. He's given us the gifts of the Spirit. And like the bride and her purifying mikvah, her bath, we have been baptized with water and by the cleansing power of the Holy Spirit. And we drank the cup of the covenant at communion. You seeing all this symbolism here?
Amen.
Pretty powerful, isn't it?
Yes.
I mean, really cool when you realize, again, when you go back to Colossians, Paul says, all these things are shadows of the substance of Christ, shadows of the reality that's there. That's what God was doing. He was trying to teach Israel. It's amazing to me, the more I delve into Hebrew culture and the meaning behind it, how someone can't realize that Jesus has fulfilled the law. He was what the law was pointing to. The law was trying to tutor people to receive Christ when he came. In this interim between Pentecost, the betrothal, where Jesus left to go and prepare a place, and then the Feast of Trumpets, Jesus, our bridegroom, returned to his father's house to prepare everything for our arrival. Before he departed, he told us he was going to prepare a place for us and come back and get us.
That's right.
We demonstrate our love, that we love only him, that we're loyal, and we keep our lamps burning and we strive to be ready because we don't know when he might come. Our bridegroom will return when the trumpet sounds and he comes with a shout. And you read about that, that's in there, there's a, there's a shout and then the dead in Christ rise, and Jesus will take us to heaven to be with his father. And that's when the father will put our hand in his hand, and we will be the wife of Christ. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, so we've talked about the Feast of Trumpets. The immediate meeting, I'm just reviewing here, it's a call to repentance. It was also preparation for the next feast, the Day of Atonement, which was nine days later. It was also a day of rest. And so the prophetic event is the rapture of the church. And the application to the church is that we need to stay ready. And when the rapture takes place and Israel realizes, oh, wow, it's beginning to happen, Israel needs to get ready. They need to get ready during the tribulation. Okay, let's look at the second Fall Feast, which is the Day of Atonement. And the immediate meeting of the Day of Atonement is that once a year, the high priest would enter the holy of holies with a blood sacrifice. And he would atone for the sins of the nation. We read in Leviticus, chapter 16, verse 17, thou shall be no man in the tabernacle meeting when he, the high priest, goes in to make atonement to the holy place. Until he comes out, that he may make atonement for, look at this, himself, his household, and for all the assembly of Israel. I remember when I was, studied the feast initially and I was reading them, and this was many years ago, it seemed kind of unusual why there were two feasts, Passover and the Day of Atonement, that both referred to Jesus dying on the cross for our sins. You know, because Passover, the Passover lamb was shed, so, and then when they put the blood of the lamb on the doorposts of the house, the death angel passed over. And as we learned last week, in the Passover meal that Jesus was celebrating, what we call the Last Supper, the Lord's Supper, there was three cups of wa, or excuse me, four cups of wine in it. The third cup, the cup after supper, symbolized the blood of the Passover lamb. And Jesus said, this cup is the cup of the new covenant. This is my blood, which is given for the forgiveness of sin. And so Passover talked about Jesus dying on the cross for our sin. And then I always remember, how come they had another feast later on? The Day of Atonement, where the high priest would sacrifice and he would go and, and he would offer the sacrifice for the sins of Israel. It just seemed a little different. And I think there's two reasons for that. One is because in the Passover, Jesus is the sacrifice, okay? In the Day of Atonement, Jesus is the high priest, showing that he's the mediator between God and man. And so that's what God was teaching in that, that Jesus is the mediator between God and man. But I believe there's also another thing that's significant. And this is where the prophetic meeting comes into it. The Day of Atonement was a day of national redemption. God called the nation to himself. We go back to this verse. He made atonement for all the assembly of Israel. Now, when Jesus died, he did not have to make atonement for himself. He was not sinful. There is a doctrine that's floating around, you don't care it much anymore, but it was called the JDS heresy, Jesus died spiritually. There are some people that said, when Jesus died on the cross, he became sinful, not only he'd take our sin, but he became sinful. He became a son of Satan, okay? And where people sometimes get that from is when you read in Corinthians when Paul said, he who knew no sin became sin. And they say, see, Jesus became sin. He became wicked, he became evil. There is one problem with that. In both the Hebrew and the Greek language, the word for sin is the same word as sin offering. And if you read it in the NIV, the NIV, I think, doesn't get everything right. I kind of prefer the New King James a little better, but this one instance where the NIV nails it. He who knew no sin became a sin offering. And when you go back to Leviticus, chapter six, it's talking about the sin offering the whole time through, even though the sin of the nation was put upon the sin offering, it says that it was most holy to the Lord. At no time did Jesus become sinful. At no time did he become wicked. He was still pure, holy, spotless lamb of God. And so it's just something for us to realize. Jesus did not make atonement for himself because he was perfect. He never became sinful. But he did make atonement for the nation. And so that's a day nationally. Remember Passover, everyone had to sacrifice the Passover lamb. It was a personal sacrifice. I believe Passover symbolizes a personal redemption, that God is calling individuals to himself, and that's what he did in the first coming, the Spring Feast. Jesus was calling everyone, he died, he was a Passover lamb. But in the Day of Atonement, what is taking place is God is calling Israel. He's trying to gather Israel to himself, and so Israel can be saved. When we look at prophecy in Zechariah, chapter two, we see that the, that the Day of Atonement is connected to the Second Coming of Christ. Zechariah 12:10, it says, I will pour on the house of David and the inhabitants of Jerusalem. Now, who is that? Who's the house of David and the inhabitants of Israel? Jews. It's Jews, yeah. The spirit of grace is supplication. Then they will look on me whom they pierced. It's interesting. When this was written, the Romans had not invented crucifixion yet. You talk about powerful. And yet, who they pierced with the nails and the hands and the feet. Yes, they will mourn for him as one who mourns his only son and grieve for him as one grieves for a firstborn. So again, as you, as you remember back, the Feast of Trumpets to the Day of Atonement was his time of mourning over sin, a time of calling to repentance. And that's the Day of Atonement was God offering, uh, the high priest offering a sacrifice for sin. And they needed to repent of their sin. This is pointing to the Day of Atonement. And realize it says, they look on me. And you, another place in the word, it says that during this time, the whole world is going to see Jesus. And so what happens is this is a different instance from the rapture of the church. Because the rapture of the church takes place in the twinkling of an eye. Everyone blink your eyes, okay? A twinkle is faster than a blink, okay? All right? That's how quick, in the twinkling of an eye, Jesus comes and gets us and raptures us in the dead Christ. And boom, there's no way everyone's gonna look on him and see him who he has mourned. And they're gonna mourn him. Many people think that this Day of Atonement, Jesus is going to appear in the sky for a 24-hour period so that as the world revolves around, the entire world is going to see him. It's the Day of Atonement they're going to mourn, they're gonna look on the one that they pierced. We see in Daniel, chapter nine, verse 24, seventy weeks are determined. Now, we're gonna be looking at Daniel. And, uh, I don't know what all chapters we'll get into, but it'll be interesting. But Daniel talks about seventy weeks. And as you read it, sixty-nine weeks have already taken place. There is a week that has not been fulfilled yet in prophecy. That final week, and a week it wasn't seven days. Those weeks represented a period of seven years, a total of 490 years. And they say from Daniel's prophecy to the time Jesus was crucified, it was 483 weeks. Then you've got the summer season, when Jesus comes back in the rapture and the seven-year tribulation starts, you now have the 70th week. So realize when he says seventy weeks are determined for your people, who is Daniel's people?
Israel.
Israel and your holy city, Jerusalem. And so there's one week that remains. And so seventy weeks are determined to finish the transgression, to make it end of sins and to make reconciliation for iniquity. That's the Day of Atonement that God, he makes atonement for your people, for the holy city, for the nation, to bring in everlasting righteousness, to seal up vision and prophecy, and to anoint the most holy. So this is referring to the Second Coming, when Jesus appears at the end of the tribulation. He is going to save Israel, not just from their sins, but from their enemies who want to kill them, okay? And we'll get to that in just a moment. I want to focus a little bit, we talked about earlier how in the Passover feast, Jesus was a sacrifice. In the, in the Feast of, the Day of Atonement, Jesus is the high priest. And we see in Hebrews, you read, uh, chapter, Hebrews, chapter eight through 10, it is just filled with references to Jesus being our high priest. It says in, I'll just read a couple of them, in Hebrews, chapter eight, verse one and two. Now, this is the main point of the things that we are saying. Don't you love that? It's taken eight chapters to get to the main point of the things we're saying. I try to get to my main point a little bit sooner in my seminars, okay? All right, we have such a high priest, who is seated at the right hand of the throne of the majesty in heavens, a minister of the sanctuary and of the true tabernacle, which the Lord erected and not man again. We see this image of what Paul says, everything in the Old Testament were shadows of the heavenly reality of something, they were just foreshadowing. They were prophecies, they were shadow pictures pointing to the real thing. You go to Hebrews, chapter nine, verse 24 to 26, Christ did not enter a sanctuary made with human hands. That was, that was only a copy of the true, of the tabernacle and the temple. Those were copies of the true tabernacle in heaven. He entered heaven itself, now to appear for us in God's presence. Nor did he enter heaven to offer himself again and again, the way high, the way the high priest enters the most holy place every year with blood that is not his own. You realize the high priest every year had to take that blood in to atone for the sins of the nation. And it, it really didn't take care of it. They had to keep atoning again and again and again. And nowadays, who realized that they have not done the Day of Atonement sacrifice? Because there is no temple. Since Rome destroyed the temple and invaded Jerusalem in 78 A.D., they have not really fulfilled, so they see that the Day of Atonement is now a Day of Forgiveness. It's a Day of Forgiveness. But they can't have that. And in the end times, when they rebuild the temple and they offer sacrifices, they're gonna start celebrating all these feasts. And so Jesus, he only had to die once. Otherwise, Christ would have had to suffer many times since the creation of the world. But he has appeared once for all. All includes everybody. We talked about last week, it was Jews and Gentiles. It was all ethnos, all ethnics, every race, every kind of person. Jesus died once for all at the culmination of the ages to do away with sin by the sacrifice of himself. Just as people are destined once to die and after that to face the judgment, we may get into what happens to you in the afterlife, depending on how fast the study goes and that kind of thing. But many people say, well, hey, you know, I believe in reincarnation. I get a second chance, I get another turnaround if I don't get it right here. Not according to scripture. You only have one shot. It's appointed unto the man once to die, and after that, we all face judgment. So Christ was sacrificed once to take away the sins of many. And he will appear a second time, not to bear sin, but to bring salvation to those who are waiting for him. Okay, so Israel is not only gonna be saved spiritually during the end times, but they're gonna be saved little earlier. We see this in Zechariah, chapter 14, verse two and three. Says, I will gather all the nations to battle against Jerusalem. The city shall be taken, the houses rifled, and the women ravished. Half of the city shall go into captivity. So realize the end times battle at the end, there is a lot of pain and suffering that goes on. It's not just Jesus shows up and nothing's seen. There is a lot of pain and suffering. But it says, the remnant of the people shall not be cut off from the city. Then the Lord will go forth and fight against those nations as he fights in the day of battle, verse four. In that day, his feet will stand on the Mount of Olives, which faces Jerusalem on the east. And the Mount of Olives shall be split in two, from east to west, making a very large valley. Half of the mountains shall move toward the north and half of it toward the south. Notice, Jesus touches the earth here. When you read about the rapture in 1 Thessalonians 4, he only appears in the clouds through the twinkling of an eye. But in Zechariah, he appears in the clouds, everyone sees him, and then he steps foot on the earth. Revelation expands what's going to take place on the Day of Atonement. Revelation 19:11 through 21, I saw heaven open, and behold, a white horse. And he who sat on him was called faithful and true, and in righteousness he judges and makes glory. And the armies in heaven, clothed in fine linen, white and clean, followed him on white horses. That's us. You get to ride a horse.
Yes.
My daughters have wanted horses, and I says, you just wait, someday you're getting your horse. Your father's gonna buy it for you, not this one, but that one, okay? I'm off the hook, thank you, Jesus.
Thank you, Lord.
Clean it up after a dog's enough, but I hate to clean it up after a horse in my yard, okay? All right, where are we at? Okay, verse 15, right there. Now, out of his mouth goes a sharp sword, that with it, he should "Now out of his mouth goes a sharp sword, that with it he should strike the nations." Skip to verse 19. "And I saw the beast," that's the Antichrist, "who is inhabited by Satan, Satan possesses him. The kings of the earth and their armies gathered together to make war against him who sat on the horse and against his army. Then the beast was captured, and with him the false prophet, who worked signs in his presence, by which he deceived those who received the mark of the beast and those who worshiped his image. These two were cast alive in the lake of fire, burning with brimstone; the rest were killed with sorb, which proceeded from the mouth of him who sat on the horse; and all the birds were filled with their flesh." So just to recap, what takes place in the day of atonement? It was a day, the immediate meaning, it's a day of national redemption, a sacrifice for the nation. The prophetic event is the second coming of Jesus, when he is going to save Israel from their enemies. Any questions about the feast, or excuse me, the day of atonement? Anyone online? Okay, let's look at the third fall feast, which is the seventh and final feast, it's the feast of tabernacles. It's also called the feast of in-gathering. And the immediate meaning was that it celebrated the end of the fall harvest. The third, it was the third and the final harvest, there was three harvest festivals. You had the feast of first fruits, which symbol, and which they started the barley harvest and they waved a green sheaf of barley. And we talked about how that symbolized the beginning of the harvest of people. The second feast of the harvest was the feast of Pentecost, when many people began to be harvested and come into the kingdom of God. This is the third and final feast, they would harvest dates, olives and grapes here. They would marinate them, they put them on their roofs to dry. And they wanted them to get dry before the rainy season comes because right after the feast of tabernacles, the rainy season would come. And that's when the whole cycle would start over. So it was a harvest festival, it began the seventh month and it was a week-long festival from the 15th to the 21st day. This was one of the pilgrimage feasts. There were three feasts where faithful Jews had to return to the city of Jerusalem. The first one was the feast of unleavened bread, they had to come back for unleavened bread. If you remember, of unleavened bread was the 15th, Passover is the 14th, first fruits is the 16th. So they were in Israel for those three feasts together and it was a week-long feast. They came back in the third month for the feast of Pentecost, and that was a pilgrimage feast. That's why you had all those Jews from these different nations who heard them speaking in their own language. And then here, the last feast is this harvest feast. So it's also called the feast of in-gathering because they would gather it in. And it's called that in Exodus, chapter 23, the second part of verse 16. Going more into the immediate meaning, it commemorated Israel living in temporary shelters. The in-gathering term, it refers to the harvest, but tabernacles refers to them living in tabernacles or tents when God brought them out of Egypt. They lived in those tents 40 years, now that was not God's will. God only wanted them to live in tents for a short time, but when they rebelled, again, the spies went in, the 12 spies went in. And they came out and 10 gave a bad report, 2 gave a good report, they didn't go in. They had to live for 40 years there. And so what took place is Israel was to build booths and tents and live in those temporary shelters for a week during this week-long festival. Just reminding them that God took us out of slavery in Egypt. Again, God was always pointing to that, "I took you out of slavery." I think it's a sign of us, he took us out of the slavery of sin, it's the great redemption of mankind. We see in Leviticus 23:42 to 43, "You will dwell in booths for seven days." Now, how could I live in a tent for seven days? You know, when we go camping, we go tenting, but seven days, that's a little long for me. You know, a lot of us, we get in our big campers, our RVs, you know, we don't rough it, but no, they had to be in their tents. And it says, "All you who are native Israelites shall dwell in booths, that your generations may know, that I made the children of Israel dwell in booths when I brought them out of the land of Egypt, I am the Lord, you're God." Now, in the millennium, which is a thousand-year period, when Christ reigns on the earth as king, this is where the prophetic meeting comes in. Jesus is going to tabernacle on the earth. He's going to dwell on the earth and all of the world will come and worship him during the millennium. And so this draws symbolism from the feast of tabernacles, that Jesus is gonna tabernacle, it's the booths. And also draws symbolism from the final harvest, the in-gathering of all people to God's kingdom. Because we read, and we're gonna read this further, that everyone's supposed to come to Jerusalem and celebrate this feast of tabernacles during the millennium. What's interesting, in Numbers, Numbers 29 details the sacrifices that need to be made for this feast, the feast of tabernacles. And in verse 13, on the first day of the feast, remember it's seven days long, 13 bulls are sacrificed. The second day, 12 bulls, it's in verse 17. Verse 20, the third day, 11 bulls. Bulls, not bowls, I'm sorry. Verse 23, the fourth day, 10 bulls. Verse 26, the fifth day, nine. Verse 29, the sixth day, eight. Verse 32, the seventh day, is seven. When you add those up, 70 bulls were slaughtered over the feast of tabernacles. And what we are told is that in Genesis 10, there are 70 nations. The Jews call this the table of nations. And if you add up all the names of the sons, Noah had three sons, Chen, Ham and Jacob. When you add up their sons and grandsons, you come up with 70 people groups. And the Jews believe, and they teach this day, that all the nations of the world come from these basic 70 people. And so you're tying in all 70 nations in Genesis 10, there are 70 bulls, one for every nation. How God wants all people to come to him and that's symbolic of the feast of tabernacles. And so these bulls were sacrificed so that the nations could be included in the harvest, every nation. You go to Zechariah, chapter 14, verse 9. And it's, "The Lord shall be king over all the earth. In that day, it shall be, the Lord is one and his name is one." So Jesus is gonna be king of the millennia over all the earth. They didn't know it was gonna be a thousand years, that's a revelation that came later on in Revelation, it was just a period of time. You read verse 16 of Zechariah 14. "It shall come to pass that everyone who is left of all the nations which came against Jerusalem shall go up from year to year to worship the king, the Lord of hosts, and to keep the feast of tabernacles." So the feast of tabernacles was prophetic of the thousand-year millennial reign when Jesus tabernacles on earth and he reigns as king. Any questions so far? Cardinals?
Everyone on earth is gonna go to visit or in the worship Jesus there once a year?
The question is, in the millennium, is everyone going to go to Jerusalem to worship Jesus once a year? And the answer is that yes, they're supposed to. Because when you continue to read in Zechariah, it says, "Those who don't, no rain will fall upon their land." So, yeah, it sounds like everybody's gonna go, I sure hope they have a lot of hotel rooms, you know? Yes, question here.
During that period of time, those who were raptured are considered guardians? And those who made it through the tribulation are the population? And so we are set up to judge sin while the devil is...
I'm gonna try to repeat your question for the camera, for those listening. Matter of fact, I'm gonna have you repeat, we've got a microphone coming, so we're gonna let you repeat that for the mic, I think it'll be a little bit easier.
So just to clarify, we who were raptured, we become those who watch over? Those who went through the tribulation and are the population? And we judge them? And this is during a period of time when the devil isn't changed?
Yes, the devil will be in the bottomless pit chained up for a thousand years. And I believe, as I read scripture, that we who are raptured, it talks about we are kings and priests with Christ, we're going to rule and reign with him. It's talking this millennial kingdom, that, you know, you think about it, all over the world, you're going to have, you're going to need to have the government of God. Because Jesus is physically going to rule the world from Jerusalem. So you're going to need governors of all different levels, you know, some to lead the nation. This is, we have presidents and then governors and mayors, that kinda thing. You're gonna need people at all different levels of leadership. And so those of us who were raptured are going to be ruling and reigning over the earth at different levels. You say, "Well, how do you know what position you get?" I think your position in the millennium depends on what you do with what you have right now. And we're gonna be judged, the judgment seat of Christ. If we are, you know, passionate about God, doing his work now, I think he's gonna, you know, he who was faithful of five cities, I'll give you five more, he was faithful of two, you get two more. God will give us the level of our ability and how do we use our talents here? So yes, I believe that's going to happen. And then those people that survived the tribulation, that did take the mark of the beast, and that's, well... That's the reason I don't believe it's a post-trib rapture, because if it's a post-trib rapture, everyone has the mark of the beast, isn't gonna be in the millennium? If everyone's raptured, who's the population during the millennium? Nobody, you know, it doesn't make sense. So those who survived the tribulation that did take the mark will be the population. They will continue to have children, they have children, so the earth will be populated over a thousand years. Good question, all these are good questions. Alright, ready to move on? Okay, so a few things that are so interesting. And this is where knowing Hebrew culture just makes the Bible come alive. It's like, I wish I knew more Hebrew culture, because when you dig into it, all of a sudden, you see things that you never saw before. In John, chapter 1, we're gonna be looking at the book of John, John chapter 1, John chapter 7, John chapter 8, for those of you who wanna look at these. But in John, chapter 1, it says, "The word became flesh and dwelt among us, and we beheld his glory, the glory is of the only begotten, the Father, full of grace and truth." That word dwell means to tent or in camp. It means to reside as God made in a tabernacle when it was in the wilderness and when it was the nation of Israel. And so John said, in the first coming, Jesus came to dwell to tabernacle among us. And in the second coming, Jesus is going to come and tabernacle among us, the feast of tabernacles. So we see this reference to the feast of tabernacles by John. Another thing we see, and we'll see Jesus talk about this, this is a map of what Jerusalem looked like in Jesus' time. And down in the bottom, kinda this rectangular building, that's the pool of Salome. That's the pool where the crippled man was at and he was waiting and Jesus says, "How come you're not, you know, how come you don't get healed?" He says, "I've got no one to take me there." And when the spirit stirs the waters, someone beats me down there. Okay, that's significant. Up here is this, you see this little black rectangle? This is the Temple Mount, the temple, and that's the southern temple entrance. And what would take place as part of the feast of tabernacles, I'll advance this slide, then I'll go back. Every day, a priest would go to the pool of Salome and bring water to the Temple Mount for a water libation ceremony. So the priest would leave up here, he'd walk down here, he'd get a pitcher of water, he'd bring it back to the temple. What he would do then is the water would be poured out, and again, this was a seven-day feast, it was a week-long feast, they did this every day. The water would be poured out and it symbolized that one day, the knowledge of the Lord was going to cover the earth as the waters cover the seas. You read that in Habakkuk, chapter 2, verse 14. We also read it in Isaiah, chapter 11, verse 9. It says, "They shall not hurt." Now, what is "they" referred to? We'll get to that in just a moment. "They shall not hurt nor destroy in all my holy mountain; for the earth shall be full of the knowledge of the Lord, as the waters cover the seas." Now, before we look back at the verses of what "they" is referring to, we, I just wanna look at Leviticus, chapter 23, verse 40, because it's talking about the feast of tabernacles. And it says, "You shall take for yourselves on the first day the fruit of beautiful trees," it'd be the first day of the feast. "Branches of palm trees, the boughs of leafy trees, and willows of the brook; and you shall rejoice before the Lord your God for seven days." So they would wave, every day, they would wave these branches. And it symbolized that just as you're waving this branch all around you, that the knowledge of the Lord was going to cover the earth, it would be all over the earth. It was symbolic of what was going to take place. Now, going back to Isaiah, we were in verse 9, so we're gonna pick it up in verse 4. It says, "With righteousness he will judge the poor, and decide with equity for the meek of the earth. He shall strike the earth with the rod of his mouth, with the breath of his lips, he shall slay the wicked," okay? So that's referring to his second coming, day of atonement. Verse 5, "Righteousness shall be the belt of his loins, faithfulness the belt of his waist. The wolf also shall dwell with the lamb, the leopard shall lie down with the young goat, the calf and the young lion and the fatling together, and a little child shall lead them." This is describing the millennium. Verse 7, "The cow and the bear will graze, their young ones shall lie down together; the lion shall eat straw like the ox, the nursing child shall play by the cobra's hole." Good parenting there, isn't it? "And the wean child shall put his hand in the viper's den. They shall not hurt nor destroy, and all my holy mountain for the earth shall be full of the knowledge of the Lord, as the waters cover the sea." We see in the millennium, the world is semi-restored to a pre-fall state, okay? That's what's going to happen. The animals aren't gonna be eating each other anymore. I remember this joke about Adam one day was walking in the garden and all of a sudden, he saw a lion chase an antelope and kill an antelope and eat it. And he says, "Oh no, she's gone and done it now!" And the reason is, is because there was no death before the fall. It says in Romans, chapter 5, that death entered through one man and entered through Adam, life came through Christ. There was no death, the earth is going to be restored to a semi-restored, to a pre-fall state during the millennium. So let's go back, we talked about this water libation thing where the priest poured out. The water symbolized the knowledge that covered the sea. This is where it gets interesting. John, chapter 7, verse 1. "After these things, Jesus walked in Galilee, for he did not want to walk in Judea, because the Jews sought to kill him." Now, the Jews' feast of tabernacles was at hand, okay? That's significant, a lot of times, we just read by that, we don't pick it up that that's there. Jesus' brother says, "Hey, apart from here, go to Judea, that your disciples also may see the works that you're doing up here." You know, Jesus' brothers didn't like him too much. When you read further, it says, "They didn't believe he was who he said he was, I think they were jealous of him. They wanted to go back to Judea, the very place where the Jews were trying to kill him." You think they're trying to off their brother? And I was so sick of Jesus, he's always been the perfect child, you know? "I teach you people, I can remember Jesus." Well, he's God, no, they didn't believe that, but you know, they wanted Jesus to die. And Jesus says, "No, I'm not going up, it's not my time." Now remember, feast of tabernacles is a pilgrimage feast, every Jew is supposed to go to that. Jesus says, "No, I'm not going, I'm not going right now." Now, when you come to verse 10, right here, "But when his brothers had gone up, then he also went up to the feast, not openly, but as it were in secret." Skip to verse 14. Now, about the middle of the feast, Jesus went up into the temple and taught. And then, you go to verse 37, and it's this part that's underlined in yellow. "On the last day of that great feast," what feast? The Feast of Tabernacles. "Jesus stood in the tabernacle, and he cries out, 'If anyone thirsts, let him come to me and drink. He who believes in me,' as the Scripture has said, 'out of his heart will flow rivers of living water.'" Jesus was saying, this water libation offering that the priest pours out, that symbolizes that God's river, that the water is just gonna cover everywhere. He says, "If you receive me, rivers of living water are gonna be pouring out of your heart. It's gonna fill you full of the knowledge of God." Jesus was tying himself to the Feast of Tabernacles, proclaiming he was the Messiah. Wow.
Amen.
We, we don't catch that, not having a Hebrew understanding of this chapter. But that's what he was saying. And he says, "This rivers of living water," he spoke concerning the Spirit, "whom those believing in him would receive, for the Holy Spirit was not given, because Jesus was not yet glorified." Jesus said, "The rivers cover the earth come from me." Not libation, not from the Pool of Salome, not from this ritual Feast of Tabernacles you're doing. I am the fulfillment of this Feast of Tabernacles. He declared that. He said he was the Messiah, who revealed the knowledge of the Lord over the whole earth. In verse 40 of John, chapter 7, it says, "Therefore, many from the crowd," when they heard this saying, that he was gonna, if you believe in him, "out of, out of him will flow rivers of living water." They said, "Truly, this is the prophet." Now, what's that referring to? Either it's the prophet like Moses in Deuteronomy 1850. Moses says, "Someday, God's gonna raise up a prophet like me." Now, many of the Jews did not realize that Moses was referring to the Messiah. Because the Messiah, Jesus, did several miracles, as many are more miracles. There were actually more miracles than Moses, because John says, "If I wrote about everything Jesus did, there would not enough, be enough volumes of the earth to contain all the things that Jesus did." And so, we see that there is a, that this prophet like Moses, that's who they thought it was, or a different prophet, not the Messiah? They also thought it might be Elijah or Jeremiah, who would prepare the way. You see that in Matthew, chapter 16, verse 14, when Jesus said, "Who do people say I am?" And they said, "Well, some say you're John the Baptist, some say Elijah, some say you are Jeremiah." There are others, though, in verse 41. Others said, "This is the Christ." They picked up on what Jesus was saying. He's the fulfillment of the Feast of Tabernacles. They got it. This is the Christ. But some said, "Well, Christ come out of Galilee." And if you keep reading, it says, it says he's coming out of Bethlehem. Well, we know that Jesus was born in Bethlehem, but he was taken to Egypt, uh, because Herod tried to kill him. And they had to get out of Israel. They couldn't stay there. And Jesus fulfilled the prophecy that, "My son will come out of Egypt." And then, he came from Galilee, then when they came back, it was out of Galilee. So, Jesus was the Christ, but many of the Jews missed it. Now, um, go, jump to John, chapter 8, okay? Another aspect of the Feast of Tabernacles is there is a torch ceremony on Temple Mount that got bigger and bigger every day. So much, so that on the last day of the feast, there would be so many torches on Temple Mount, that you could see the light of the temple all the way to Galilee. Okay? It was incredible. And it was at this time, John, chapter 8, follows John, chapter 7. In fact, it's the day after the Feast of Tabernacles ends. Jesus says, John 8:12, "I am the light of the world. I'm gonna bring the light of God to all people." Jesus right there was declaring himself to be the Messiah in the context of the Feast of Tabernacles. He did it with the water, he did it with the light. And so, there, that wraps up how Jesus is the fulfillment of the Feast of Tabernacles. He is going to come and rule and reign on the earth. And all the world is going to gather to him. At the second coming, they're gonna look on the one they purist. So, the feasts of Israel, the spring feast, they represent, they prophesy to the first coming of Christ. The fall feast prophesy to the second coming of Christ. And they have incredible implications for you and I. All right, any questions you have? Any questions at all? None? All right.